All right. On with the show. Good evening and welcome to the March 20th, 2023, Meeting of the City of Summit Zoning Board of Adjustment. My name is Stephen Spur and I am Chairman of the Summit Zoning Board. In accordance with New Jersey Statute 10:4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to a newspaper of record and has been posted here in City Hall. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and dequorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For the benefit of the interested public, this meeting is being livestreamed to the city's YouTube page and also broadcast on Summit's government channel, which is Comcast Channel 34 and Verizon Channel 30. Please note that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room where you entered. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system here at the Davis and return it after our meeting. Andy Ball is the zoning board's attorney. He will advise board members on matters of law and is the key interface with an applicant's attorney. Mr. Ball does not vote on the applications. Stephanie Sulios is a city employee and the zoning board secretary. Ms. Sulios assists applicants with the preparation of their applications, planning our agenda, and keeping our meeting minutes. Ms. Sulios also does not vote on the applications. Our board consists of seven regular members and up to four alternates. All members can participate in hearings tonight, but a maximum of seven can vote. Most applications require a simple majority to be approved. Some applications require five affirmative votes to be approved. You'll be told which majority will be required before we begin our deliberations. Ms. Sulios, would you please call the role of the members?
Sure. Chairman Spur?
Here.
Vice Chairman Steiner is excused this evening. Ms. Newell?
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
Mr. Mullen?
Here.
Mr. Malley?
Here.
Mr. Loickets?
Here.
Ms. Toth?
Here.
Ms. Sager?
Here.
Mr. Fescans?
Here.
Mr. Yucco?
Here.
You have a quorum. You may proceed.
We generally hear the applications in the order they are listed on the agenda. We try to have each hearing last no more than 30 minutes, but we do understand that some applications are too complex to be heard within that timeframe. Each hearing begins with the applicant or their attorney giving an overview of the application and the variances that are required. We then hear from any expert witnesses the applicant may have to help explain their application and why the variances are needed. Board members may ask questions of the applicant, their attorney, and the expert witnesses. Once the board professionals and board members have completed their questioning, the public will have an opportunity to ask questions. This is not the time to tell us what you think about this application. That opportunity comes at the end of the hearing. Before you ask your questions, please clearly state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address. It is important that our court reporter be able to keep it clear and act your public record. Court reporting is being done through the microphone and the video, so try to speak into the microphone. After all witnesses have been heard, members of the interested public have their second opportunity to speak, and at that time you may express your opinion, positive or negative, about the application. Then the public hearing is closed, and we then enter into executive session where the board members discuss the application and vote. You will be able to listen to our executive session, but you will not normally be able to participate in the discussion. Most applications are heard and decided in the same evening. If an application requires additional information or testimony that cannot be provided tonight, we will carry your application to another date and it will not be decided during this meeting. Krista Anderson, the city's zoning officer, has asked that I remind all applicants that they must carefully read the resolution that documents the zoning board's decision and to pay particular attention to the conditions contained in the resolution. For example, if a landscaping plan is required, you must obtain one and submit it to John Lindson, the city's forester. If a grading plan is required, you must have one prepared by a civil engineer and submit three copies along with the application fee to the city's engineering division. Failure to satisfy all conditions in a resolution will result in a delay in approving your application, as it will necessitate additional follow-up from zoning and other city staff. The resolutions documenting the board's decision will normally be available one month after we decide the application. We will start by quickly running through the applications, but before we do that, if you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So let's go slightly out of order. It's my understanding Mr. Rosen couldn't spare one evening without us here, so if you want to come forward for 28 Drew Hill real quick, bring us up to speed and then...
It's always good to see all of you, and we'll get to see each other again for this case in June, as I understand it. Steve Thompson and Caitlin Lawber are in Florida. They hadn't realized the timing, and so Stephanie Sulios and I had a nice discussion about when the next meeting is, and so we would ask for postponement.
Okay. Stephanie, can you remind us, like, I know it's not with me, when's the carry date for this?
June 21st.
Okay. All right. So with that, we'll carry without further notice.
Yep.
And Mr. Rosen, I assume you're waiving the timeframe within which to act?
Yes, definitely, since it's almost that long till the meeting.
Yes, thank you. Okay, excellent. So with that noted, do we have a motion to carry 28 Drew Hill Road to June 21st?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
That bubbly energy right there, Mr. Loickets. He's the center of it all. All right. We're gonna quick roll.
Sure. Chairman Spur?
Yes.
Ms. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Loickets?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rosen.
Thank you.
Excellent. So we'll return back to the agenda, what I'll ask the other three applicants to do is just send one person forward. We're gonna quickly ask you how many witnesses you have with you this evening, approximately how long you think it'll take, and then we'll start back at the top of the order. We'll hear first 6 Westminster Road. So could we have maybe Simon or one of the Lindemans just come forward real quick? Yep.
Should I just take in this one?
Yes, please. Just your name real quick. Yep.
Simon Lindeman.
Oh, yeah. Do you have any professionals with you this evening, an attorney or architect?
I have an architect with us.
Okay. And that's it for this evening for witnesses?
Yes.
Okay. I think 30 minutes or so sounds about right?
It's up to you.
It's up to her. No pressure. All right, thank you. You can grab a seat.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be 31 Montrose Avenue.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. And for your application, do you have an attorney or any witnesses with you this evening?
I am the architect, John James.
The architect as well. Okay, and 30 minutes or so sounds about right?
Yeah, I think so.
There's only one answer to that question, so yes. Thank you. And then finally, 38 Morris Turnpike VIP Puppy Spa. Haven't heard this one a lot.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Blake With, attorney for the applicant. I have three witnesses with me today, our engineer, and I understand that our architect and the owner are en route, should be here any minute.
We've got about an hour, so we've got two cases ahead of you. Perfect. Very good. Thanks, Blake. We'll see you from your short.
Thank you.
All right, so let's begin back 6 Westminster Road. Mr. Lindeman, if you'll join us back up again?
Here, if you have any...
You can take the front stage, the center stage.
I'll do that. Happy to. Feels very official after that.
Very much so. You're on YouTube here, so enjoy your moment of fame. If you could please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matter, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Happy to tell the truth.
And please state your name, spell your last name.
Simon Lindeman. My last name is difficult, so it's L-I-N-D-E-N-M-A-N-N.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Lindeman, we'll let your architect do all the heavy lifting for you, but can you quickly just summarize why you're here, what you're looking for, and then we'll pepper her with all the hard questions.
Sure. So we've been moved, living in 6 Westminster Road for about three and a half years. We're a family of five, and we love the neighborhood and we love the place. We have a side stoop which leads into our garden, to our barbecue and everything, basically, and that, those steps are kind of falling apart. And, you know, I think you were here, you were there today, and it's kind of like really rusty and old, and the door which leads outside to the garden is so small that every time I have to carry something through, I have to decide whether I go or whatever I carry go through. And so, you know, I can't really go through my, to my barbecue and see my kids outside. So we have decided that we need to renew the staircase, basically, and as a consequence, we would also like to have a slightly larger door so that we can actually go through. As a consequence, we hired an architect. They told us it needs to move eight feet to the right, basically. It's still the same side. It's right next door to it, basically, and as part of that, we said, okay, let's move it. And here I am today to ask for the permission to move an existing stove, build it new, and move it eight feet to the right.
Okay, wonderful. Good synopsis. Any questions from the board for the applicant? Anything from our professionals for the applicant? Good synopsis. I know that any members of the interested public here this evening for this case for 6 Westminster Road? Continue to ask, but so far, so good?
We asked all our neighbors, everyone with text message confirmed that they're totally good.
Okay, excellent. Well, then we'll let you grab a seat. We'll hear from your architect and we'll press it on. Wherever you're more comfortable. You're our guest this evening.
Hi there. Good evening.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matter, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
It is.
Please state your name, spell your last name.
Elizabeth Rush. R-U-S-H.
Thank you, and I know you've appeared before us a number of times. Any changes to your credentials since the last time?
No.
All right. License still in good standing in New Jersey?
It is.
I assume the board would like to accept you once again? We would. Welcome back.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to go over two to three points, just in the staff comments that I saw. One, if we go to the engineering report, the color is engineering report, number eight, and I emailed Krista and Stephanie, I think it was Monday, I actually had a discrepancy, I apologize, in my zoning square footage calculations, which is pretty apparent when you read this, because it says that we're increasing, or I had said we were increasing the building coverage, 343 square feet. That's obviously not the case. We're really keep, I think we're only increasing it six square feet, because the landings and steps are the same. So with the number eight comment in the report, that would actually have possibly put us over on lot coverage, I believe, and building coverage. So that, that's a moot point, because the, the calculations are only a six-square-foot increase, and we're still compliant with that. And then the second point that I wanted to note was the number nine comment, again having to do with the zoning table that I had sent Krista and to the board previously. Again, we're only increasing a minimal amount, and so with number 10, it does state if there's an increase in lot coverage, we would need to provide stormwater management. We don't meet that requirement, so that, that could be waived. We shouldn't have to do any stormwater management. The only other item that I wanted to bring up as a condition, if possible, at the beginning at Krista's report, I believe there was a previous resolution granted to the previous owner with the AC units. Those have a 10-foot setback. The owners, Simon and Jana, would love to put in a permanent generator, and that would be in the place of the existing stoop where it is right now. And so that would meet that 10-foot requirement of that variance that was previously granted, and that would be right next to the AC units that are there now. So I don't know if that's something that we could add into the notes for this, if that would be possible?
Possible. Possible, yes. Possible. So I think there's maybe two elements to that. So the air conditioners would stay where they are?
Yes, those just stay.
And if I'm reading that correctly, though, there were, there are variances granted for the ACs, but what's the reference? The nonperformance? The nonperformance was addressed? I just want to make sure. Do we all need to address the nonperformance of the air conditioner? What do you mean? Says existing air conditioning units on the left side are nonconforming, having setback to 10 feet. Is that what the 2014?
Right, yeah.
So the additional variance would be for the...
The generator, right.
And, now let me get this straight. So same side as stoop, correct?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
So if you look at the cover page, you can see where the AC units are, and then the generator would be right behind the AC units, close to the house, but it would still meet a 10-foot requirement, whereas I think 15 feet is required in the R25. So we wanted to add, you know, bring that up in the discussion, if that could be part of the...
Okay. So I'm checking the language of the prior resolution variance. It doesn't seem like it addresses any, you know, future mechanical equipment in that area.
Right.
Specific to the air conditioner. So the board would need to consider this as another variance request for the generator tonight.
Correct.
Though it is still within the same setback, the notice of this setback variance would be sufficient for us to consider it on the fly tonight. Okay, excellent. So maybe let's just pause on, is there anything else from the engineers' report that you wanted to address?
I didn't see anything.
He gets the final word on these things.
Yeah, I didn't see anything.
So normally we condition the application on acceptance of the engineer's letter. I think we would ask the same kind of thing here, but in the resolution, we would note that our amendments, the kind of revisions that you had captured, if DIP users. Do you agree generally with her interpretation of changes to the engineer's letter?
Yeah, I don't want to nitpick, but just be...
That's what you're here for.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Yeah. Be, um, be, um, Stephanie sent the updated zoning schedule, and it looks like it was the four square foot increase versus the six.
Oh, you're right. Sorry. I was looking at, I was looking at 756. It's 752 to 756.
Application denied.
Really off my game, sorry.
Just for everybody who's...
Thank you.
And the only other thing is just to have tilt fence around your room if it's rolling towards...
Okay.
Do you track what Ms. Rush said in terms of kind of revisions to the engineer's letter? Yes. If you want her to read it back to you and spare you reading the transcript? You can do that. Okay. So we'll note, we'll note those two, we'll accept as a condition of the application, the engineer's letter as revised, and then we're considering also additional generator variance. What else caught your eye, that you wanted to draw attention to, anything else?
Um, I know that one of the board members had a chance to visit the site today. I did bring multiple copies of the existing stoop. If anyone, if I can pass them out, it's in disrepair, definitely needs to be.
Anyone interested to see pictures of the stoop?
Okay.
Okay.
I think that's it.
Anything else? Okay. Do you have a question, though, for the proposed generator variance? Do we know an exact setback that you're looking at?
It would be 10 feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just in line with your...
Yeah.
I know it's at approximately 10 feet in the memo, but...
10 feet.
Okay. Any others you'd like to say for the application?
Overall, I think it'll be a great improvement to the house. We are planning a renovation on the interior, and it'll really, you know, just give them access to their beautiful outdoor area and patio that they already have, so would love to make this happen for them.
Excellent. Any questions for the architects?
Just one. I mean, given that there is a, it's all of a four-square-foot increase, so is that because the stoop is longer?
It's a, excuse me, it's a little bit longer currently. The door is just a single door.
Yeah.
And I think it might have had room for a small grill, but we're extending it a little bit wider, just for a bigger slider.
But the stairs aren't any wider?
The stairs aren't any wider.
Okay, they looked really narrow. There were a bunch of us walking around your backyard at different times. You just didn't see us all.
Every time I carry something down, I feel like, hmm.
Yeah, I think that they're like 41 inches wide. Again, trying to limit the amount of setback.
I think I read in the application that they are going to be a little bit wider. The new ones will be wider.
I believe it was the landing is wider.
Maybe that was.
Maybe.
Maybe that was what...
Yeah.
I guess the other question is, there is some fencing and screening on that side of the house between you and the neighbor, and it pretty much stops at the stoop and the landing. Is there any thought of filling that in? I mean, apparently your neighbor doesn't object.
We got it this way when we bought it.
Okay.
The only thing we did, it was in bad conditions, so we replaced it when we, when the fence wasn't, kind of, you might have seen the fence basically was me, because of the deer. So we replaced it, because it looked so ugly that we were like, we can't have this. Our neighbor just plants new trees next to it and kind of is still there.
Okay, that's fine.
And I'll ask again, if there's any members of the interested public here for the application? If you're going to say none. Mr. Lindeman, if you'd like to say anything in conclusion?
No, I would love to have a better staircase. Thank you for all the good advice on making it wider and... We would love to have the generator, because all our neighbors have one, and the last time we had six days no power, it was a little bit annoying to see all the neighbors having the noise of the generator, but you're sitting in the cold and waiting. Tricked my wife a little bit into telling me that we need a generator.
Very persuasive. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Andy, I don't think the conditions are terribly luminous, but what have we got? Just our usual one, compliance with those conditions noted in the board engineer's memorandum, and just noting again for the record, the additional variance request here to the side guard setback for the proposed generator that's not listed in this memo, and that's at the 10-foot setback.
Yes.
Okay. Who would like to begin the deliberations?
It is a very minimal request, and it's more of a safety issue. Those steps look scary to me, and I didn't go up and down, especially when you have children, so I would definitely approve this application.
Anything further to add, Claire? Anything else?
No, I second this. They, they didn't look particulars, particularly safe, and certainly the new addition will be more in keeping with the house overall and the landscaping, and as, as the applicant said, the neighbors are in favor of this, are not objecting to it, and certainly with the generator, everything's within the same, the same setback, and it all makes, it all makes sense to me.
I'm thinking Vice Chair Gonzalez?
I'm gonna piggyback on, on Ms. Toth's comments there. I think the prior setbacks were a little bit stricter, if I'm reading that correctly, where it was 17 feet, and then it was 15 feet, and now we're looking at 10 feet, so I think for those reasons, it's not really that extreme to consider the generator, you know, an added benefit. I also have a generator, and because my neighbors have one, and it's super annoying and super loud, if you don't have one, then you're cold. So yeah, no, I think it's a, it's a good addition to the house. And yeah, the safety of the stairs is obviously, it's beneficial for you and for the house, so yeah, I would second.
Approve this application.
You're sufficiently redundant. I do agree that the improvement to this, to the stairs offer a clear safety benefit to the homeowners and anyone else kind of utilizing the property, so we appreciate the investment in terms of safe ingress and egress on the property. And with regard to the additional variance to the generator, there appears to be no evidence of infringing upon light, air, or space of neighboring properties. The air conditioner or some problem thereof would have signaled that for us, so I'm sure you'll install modern equipment that will be in keeping with all the otherwise sound requirements. So I too can support the application, and with that, would ask for a motion to approve the application with the condition as noted.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Stephanie, we've got a roll call?
Sure. Ms. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Loickets?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
Chairman Spur?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Good luck to you. Enjoy your stairs and your generator. Thank you. Now they just need to be built in. Thank you, that's right. Hopefully not the generator. Not the generator, yeah, hopefully not the generator.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, next we'll hear 31 Montrose Avenue. That looks like a huge... Claire, so we'll note for the record that Ms. Toth is recusing. We'll call her back for the third one. All right, wonderful. We'll just want to swear you in and then ask you to say something brief about the application. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matter, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name, spell your last name.
Christian Massacesi, M-A-S-S-A-C-E-S-I.
Thank you. Mr. Massacesi, just a bit about your application while you're here tonight, and then we'll hand it over to your...
Sure. So we came in the United States in 2017. I'm a medical oncologist. I work for a big pharma, AstraZeneca. I'm the chief medical officer and oncology chief development officer. Fundamentally, I develop cancer medicines, and my wife also is working a big pharma, Novartis. She's a biologist, and she's also working in oncology, developing cancer, cancer medicines. So we came here on a local contract, so we are very happy here. Beyond the job, we found really the nice environment. We have two daughters, eight and four years old. The first one was born in France, coming from Paris, and the second one is American. She's born here in Summit. So fundamentally, what we are looking for is a little bit more space, because the house is not very big. Actually, it's a three-bedroom, but kind of small house, so we need another room to use as an office, because we're working more remotely now, at least one day a week. We would like a master with a bathroom and a little bit larger kitchen, because it's really too, too small. So I think we discussed with the architect to minimize the changes, might try to generate a little bit more space that will allow us to continue to live in this place. We could decide to purchase another bigger house, but we really enjoy the area, the quarter, the neighborhood, and we have friends. Our daughters are very happy with the school system in that area, so yeah, we would, we would prefer to remain in this area.
Wonderful. Any questions for the applicant? Okay? Any questions from our professionals for the applicant? No, good. Any members of the interested public here this evening for 31 Montrose? Yes, maybe a couple.
Until the end?
Until the end?
You have the opportunity to ask questions of.
No, I don't have questions. I have something I don't want to read.
Yep, you'll be offered the opportunity to make a statement at the end of the application.
That's what I want to make sure.
Yep. Do you, sir, have any questions?
It's virtually impossible to hear what's going on out back here.
If you'd like to come forward, you're welcome to. We could even clear the front bench for you.
No, I'm just saying it's very hard to hear what you're saying.
We'll try to speak up, but if you do want to come forward, you're welcome to. And then, sir, did you have a separate comment or are you going to anticipate having a separate set of questions?
Well, I asked just a couple of questions.
Okay, wonderful. This will offer an opportunity at the end of each witnesses for you to come and ask a question or at the end of the application for you to provide comments. Okay, wonderful. So aside from that, we'll let you grab a seat and we'll offer your first witness the opportunity to speak.
If you'd raise your right hand, do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matter, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name.
John James Architect, J.A.M.E.S.
Thank you. And have you appeared before the board before?
I've appeared before this board on numerous occasions.
Any changes to your credentials since the last time you appeared?
No, all my licenses are active.
Including New Jersey?
New Jersey, New York, and Connecticut, yes.
Thank you. Any questions or would you like to accept them?
Consider your credentials. Maybe.
Thank you. We were expecting to be able to do a digital presentation tonight, so I have a copy of my drawings. And I understand that they can see these from.
These are the drawings the board has in their possession?
Yes, these are the revised drawings that were submitted to the board. We did an initial submission to the board.
Just pause there for a second. We have revised or we have?
You have their revised.
We have revised, okay. All right, please.
And the principal difference in the revision is that we have added to the garage at the front of the house upon the recommendation of the zoning officer. And that has triggered a small variance for building coverage. Otherwise, the application remains pretty much as it was previously submitted, but I'll go through all of those details with you.
Do you by chance have an extra copy of your drawings with you? Just for the benefit of our neighbors in the back in case they want to follow along? Would you like to see it?
I'm happy to loan you my copy along.
No? Okay, thank you.
Okay. So the Massacesi's live at thirty-one Montrose in Summit. It's a three-bedroom house. It was built in nineteen fifty-two and it hasn't really been renovated to the current standards in their neighborhood. And as he said, they have a four-person family with two young daughters who are growing. And we're here to ask your permission to make modest improvements to the house, one of which is the garage that I previously mentioned. And the main reasons are to expand the kitchen, to create a powder room. Their current powder room borders on an airline restroom and provide a front entry vestibule. And then on the second floor, we're seeking to do a primary bedroom suite with a second bathroom so that we will improve it from three bedrooms to four bedrooms on that floor and will now have two bathrooms instead of one bathroom. The hardships for this property are that we have an undersized lot in the R six zone and it also doesn't meet the lot width requirements. It's sixty-five feet instead of ninety feet. And the existing main house and the existing main patio are in existing non-conforming locations on the property. So we're asking for three variances tonight. The first is to build new additions on the back of the house. And you can see per our drawings that we're going to be adding a small kitchen expansion, which is ninety-six square feet on the back of the house, a powder room which fills out the corner of the back of the house, which is twenty-three square feet. And those are the principal pieces on the back of the house. In order to do this and to align with the existing additions on the house, it requires a variance because as you can see from our plans, the existing rear yard setback line is about halfway through the back rooms across the entire back of the house. So we're asking for a variance of fifteen point one feet so that we can match the existing fourteen point nine foot setback where thirty feet is required. The second variance that we need is in regards to the patio. And we're going to maintain portions of the existing patio here at the back of the house. And we're going to be adding the new kitchen over a part of that and the new back stairs over a part of that patio. And we're going to be removing the portions of patio behind those parts of the house. And we're going to be adding a four-foot strip along the side of it. And we need a variance for that patio to be able to align with the existing patio because it's in an existing non-conforming location at the back of the house. So the patio is currently thirteen and a half feet away from the rear yard line and requires a variance of six point five feet because twenty feet is what's required. And we're essentially maintaining that same back line of the current patio in the new work. And then the third variance we need is for building coverage. And that's for a total of a little less than one percent or fifty-six square feet. And that's for the total of the additions that we're adding on the back of the house that I previously mentioned and also at the front of the house where we were expanding the garage by forty-two square feet to try to bring it into more conformance with the minimum standards for the Summit code. We're still under by about a foot or so, but a four-foot expansion aligned with the existing elements on the rest of the main house and the front vestibule. And it also increased the size of the garage so that you actually be able to park a car inside your garage. And then we would be able to add a set of steps that would go from the garage into the house instead of always having to come outside the house. So what we're seeking to do here tonight is a series of very small but very important improvements to this house on the various levels. And I'd like to go through that with you. You'll notice that at the bottom of the page, we outlined all the various portions of the additions, starting with the powder room at twenty-three square feet up to the kitchen at ninety-six square feet. Because this house is about four to five feet above the existing grade, all of the steps at the back and all of the steps at the front and all of those platforms count as a part of building coverage. And those building coverages exceed the variance of, that we're asking for about one and a half times. They're in the mid-seventy foot, square foot range, and we're asking for a variance of fifty-six foot, square feet. I would add that relative to the building coverage that we're asking for, building coverage is one of the metrics we look at with a house of this size, but we also look at the floor area ratio and the lot coverage. And if you look at both of those on the property, we're under by about four to five percent, both in floor area and in lot coverage. So this is definitely not a house on steroids. These are very, very minimal additions to make this a livable house for this family of four. If I go through the drawings with you so that you can see, maybe I'll switch microphones so I can, can you hear me now?
Yes.
So that I can refer to the plans. In the basement, we're simply removing a very minor wall in the main rec room. That's the only change that we're proposing. I'm drawing A O two. If you look at the existing plan, you can see where we're adding the kitchen at the back right corner next to the current family room. And down below that, you can see the powder room, the steps out to the new terrace and a set of interior steps that connect to the garage. And you can see the front garage expansion and a small vestibule at the front of the house. On the second floor, you can see the layout of the existing three bedrooms. And you can see that the bedroom over the garage number two is remaining the same. The current primary bedroom is being divided in half and it takes over a part of the corridor space. And then we're putting a closet, bedroom, and bathroom in the existing bedroom number one, and it will also occupy the space over the family room below and the kitchen addition beside that. You can see we bubbled on the front of this on the right where the new roof line is above the existing garage at the front of the house. That's a four-foot expansion that aligns with the new entry vestibule. The roof plan just follows up from that. You can see the existing elevations for the house on drawing E twenty and E twenty-one. And then on drawing A twenty, it shows you the new addition, bringing the garage and the new vestibule forward in drawing number one. You can see the proposed front perspective, drawing number four from the side. And then you can also see the new additions on the back of the house, the proposed rear elevation. And you can see the proposed perspective showing that with the steps down to the patio that's there. And then the additional side drawings that just show the profiles from the house from both of the neighbors. We submitted several photographs, I think they're with that, that show screening on the property. There is heavy screening on the right side of the property next to where the driveway in the house is running from front to back. Has low screening in the front next to where the new driveway will be. And it has tall arbivida that are approximately twenty to twenty-five feet high that start from about the front of the garage and go back to the back of the patio. There's also screening of the neighbors on the backside of the fence. The house is very well placed on the lot area and there's not a house directly behind us. There's only a house to the left of us because of the location of the Massacesi on the zoning plan. They are kind of a small lot and there are several lots that back up to theirs. And the excessive backyard is really behind the Massacesi. So the back of the Massacesi house looks to the back of three or four backyards behind it. The additions we're making are very, very minimal. They pretty much keep, are in keeping with the rest of the house. We're reusing the same type of materials and finishes. I did look at all the jurisdictional reviews that we received and we are going to comply with all of the comments that came up. From zoning, we expanded the garage as requested for the four feet out front. That added the additional forty-two square feet. We are not building the driveway out to the street, although we could, to avoid having to do an entirely new curb cut and seen eighteen feet of wide pavement. All of our AC units, the existing and the new, will be fenced or screened with plantings as mentioned. And we are adding a window well to the basement, to the window, to the, excuse me, the laundry room, but we are not trying to turn that into a bedroom. In the engineering reviews, this survey does represent the existing conditions that we are submitting to you. We will be submitting a full grading plan by Murphy and Hollows that will include all of our soil erosion, sediment, and controls for that. We did submit calculations for every single room that we were adding on so that that would be clear for engineering. There was a question about the reduction in the patio. The patio is being reduced because the new house additions are being built over the existing patio. So where we have an existing patio, we're adding the ninety-eight square feet for the kitchen. We're adding the thirty to forty square feet for the new steps. The driveway encroaches on the walkway from that at the front of the house. And those are the reasons that we are adding additional space, but the patio space went down as a net negative number. The ACs do comply with all the setbacks. The driveway does not encroach on the adjacent landscaping and the forester did approve what we were showing. And on construction, we are going to include smoke detectors and fire rating for the garages In summary, really just want to say the house hasn't been renovated to match the neighbors. So that's what we're trying to do. The existing rear yard setbacks are due to the non-conforming existing location of the house. In none of our work are we increasing any of those non-conformities. We're simply matching with what exists currently. The building coverage is necessary to try to correct some of these non-functional aspects of the house. It's very minimal, less than one percent or fifty-six square feet. And the building coverage occupied by the existing front steps and back steps is more than the amount of a variance that we're asking for with that. Doing these minor renovations in these various locations will allow this family to stay in their home and a neighborhood they like as opposed to having to move. And I think that these improvements are really consistent with the established character of this neighborhood. They don't cause any detriment to the public good or to the zoning plan of Summit. We submit that this would improve the zoning plan. The benefits of this construction certainly outweigh any detriments. And for those reasons and based upon the drawings we're submitting, we're asking you to consider our application. Thank you.
Excellent. Yeah, we'll maybe give you the first chance to ask any questions from the engineer's letter.
Thank you for going through the letter and addressing most of the comments. Just one clarification.
Sure.
The lot coverage increase per year update and revised plan is noted as two hundred and twenty-four square feet.
Yes.
Per our recent comments, just trying to understand the reduction of lot coverage versus the patio of a hundred and fifty square feet that was noted on your latest table?
Yes.
We just wanted to understand where that sidewalk reduction will happen.
So the sidewalk reduction happened where the new driveway is here. The sidewalk used to come up and turn sideways. The sidewalk reduction occurred in the front where everything was pushed out another four feet, plus the overhanging canopy, plus the steps. And then the patio in the back was due to the kitchen, the removal behind the kitchen, the new steps being placed on top of the patio.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Excellent. So we normally condition the applications on acceptance of the engineer's letter. Do you have any objections to that?
No.
No, thank you. Okay. As you're here, there's no D variances tonight, sorry. Sorry to spoil your evening.
Thank you. I just wanted to say it was very good testimony.
I was going to say, you dabble in planning at all? I got a flavor of that. That was very good. Cool. Any questions from members of the board then for architects there? Okay. Do you care to ask any questions back here?
Okay, I have something I wanted to read.
At the end, we'll get you there. Do you have, you have a question, sir?
I have a question.
You may come, yep, come up here. We'll ask you just to provide your name and your address.
Okay, Dave Barr.
If you have questions at this point, that would be wonderful.
Dave Barr, B.A.R.R., twenty-nine Montrose Avenue. That's the house downhill. The question I have now is for you, I guess, right? Because I have a couple of questions I want to ask all of you, but I don't think that's the point.
I'd like for questions to the witnesses.
So is there any plan to mitigate runoff towards my house, towards others too? Because I noticed you said that there was, you have a grading plan?
Yes.
We have Murphy and Hollows scheduled to do a grading and drainage plan that will mitigate any water runoff. I mean, that's one of the standard requirements that we agreed to in Summit for. Because it does exist now in the creation of that grading plan.
So Mr. Barr, we're just going to limit the question at the moment. You'll have the opportunity to provide commentary at the end if you'd like.
Oh, okay. This is a question.
Question, yes.
Question. Will neighbors be consulted about the creation of that grading plan? Neighbors aren't normally consulted, but it's an engineering plan based on the contours on the property by a licensed engineer here. And it does numerous events like this for the city of Summit all the time to their standards.
Okay.
Absolutely. So at this point, I cannot make a statement. Make a statement. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we'll wait till the end for comments.
Right. Well, we are, yes, fully removed.
So maybe just on that point real quick, Dipdy, from your review, engineering review, did you identify any particularly negative or negative in a changing sense from our condition that we should be sensitive to?
There was not enough information to identify that just based on the plans that were provided. However, they are providing a grading and drainage plan that considering that the lot coverage is less than three hundred square feet, that's actually a very good effect for the property.
Right, okay. It was a little overkill for me to retain drainage jurisdiction on this, but I don't know how else the board kind of feels, like if we want to encumber a little extra oversight. No, Scott's saying no.
I would.
Wally wants it. Who wants to be a type?
Just because I live in that neighborhood, we have clay, so everything is just.
I think that's absorbed.
Yeah. I would probably.
Andy, any objection?
Nope. I suppose we would be asking the applicants, do you have any objection to the board retaining drainage jurisdiction, meaning if there are drainage issues that become worse as a result of this application? Anyone can alert the city and you would have to appear back before the board with a proposal on how to address that. Normally, we retain that for two years after the completion of the construction.
Yeah, we'll agree to that. Just for the record, you should know that we are under the minimal threshold for Summit for.
And we'll hear further, probably some further testimony from the neighbors just to explain what experiences they may be having and that's useful reference for you when the engineering is conducted so you could anticipate and address any of that proactively. Not that we don't like having you here, but I'm sure you have better ways to spend your Monday evenings. Okay? Any other questions from, I know you have a statement, but no questions. Okay, I want to give you that chance. You're, I believe, the only architect we've seen move for expert testimony. Anything you'd like to say in conclusion then?
No, thank you for the community first of all. And it's my first time, so it's quite engaging. And no, thank you. I mean, I hope I made clear why we want this. It's really to cover a little bit more space for growing the family. And we really enjoy, really enjoy to be the neighborhood in this city.
Excellent. So we'll, let's have you come up if you'd like to provide your commentary. You're welcome to it. We'll ask you to just state your name, your address. We're actually going to swear you in so you can take some liberties here.
My name is Linda Taylor. Live at seven Evergreen Road, which is around the corner.
Excellent. Where to swear you in, Linda?
Raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matter, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And you stated your name, but please spell your last name.
Linda Taylor, T.A.Y.L.O.R.
Thank you.
And I want to ask a question first because I have written something, but my neighbors who live at five, he is ill and they could not come, but I have a signed thing that they wanted me to also.
You're welcome to read it.
Can I read it? That's what I want to ask.
Yes.
Okay. Well, this is me first. My name is Linda Taylor. My husband Gordon and I live at seven Evergreen Road around the corner and two doors downhill from thirty-one Montrose. We purchased our home in nineteen seventy-eight and have spent the large portion of the past forty-five years solving underground water issues. We have installed two sump pumps, dug up and replaced all our underground clay pipes and replaced them with an underground PVC pipe network that funnels water into a huge dry well in our backyard. Our two-sump pumps are attached to this underground system. We have installed larger gutters and attached all our leaders to these underground pipes which direct the rainwater from our roof into the large dry well that we have installed in our backyard. Even with all this work, when there is a heavy rainstorm and with both stumps working, we still get a stream of water coming in from the right side of our basement, which is adjacent to our neighbor's driveway, which is five Evergreen Road. Five Evergreen Road has always had underground water issues. We have had six families live there since we purchased our home and we have heard many horror stories about their water issues. That backyard has always been marshy and in nineteen eighty-four, a large double truck white oak in their yard fell on our house during an ice storm, breaking over our third floor into the front yard. The entire root system simply upended, causing tremendous damage to our home and trauma to our three children. We want to know exactly what precautions will be taken. We want to know exactly what precautions will be taken if you grant the variances necessary to modify 31 Montrose, because we are downhill from this house. The house is already, this is my, I'm not legal, so this, I could be wrong here. The house is already too big for the undersized lot, and there is hardly any open lawn. They want to construct a two-story rear addition for an enlarged kitchen and powder room, and want to enlarge their patio and their garage and something with their driveway. This will enlarge the footprint of the existing house. How will the drainage be handled? Will larger gutters and leaders be installed and attached to a system that will funnel their water to a dry well? What recourse will we have if these modifications cause increased water damage on our property? And this is from my neighbor who lives at 5, and they wanted to come, but he's ill and they couldn't come. To whom it may concern, we are writing this letter as we are unable to attend this evening's meeting. We are concerned about the proposed construction at 31 Montrose. Our concerns are related to the extensions of the rear patio and construction that will expand the profile of the house. In particular, we are concerned for the following reasons. Our yard consistently floods when it rains. We are concerned that the extension of the rear patio will reduce the amount of area where water will be absorbed into the ground, thus running off into our yard since it is immediately behind their home. We are concerned that this will cause additional flooding into our yard. We are also concerned about expanding the footprint of the house. We are okay with building up on a lot that already appears to be fairly small, also increasing the likelihood that the water will then drain into our yard. We are generally not concerned with building that may occur that will extend the height of the house, provided that proper gutters and drainage are installed, that do not dump additional water into our yard. We request to have an architect review the renovation plans, and that they include adequate subsoil drainage tanks in the back and appropriate channeling slash gutters that divert water to the front of the house. We wish our neighbors the best of luck with their home renovation, and we can be contacted at, and there's a phone number, for additional questions. And this is from Laura Sankowicz and Jonathan Barbado, who live at 5 Evergreen, who are our next door neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I don't know, maybe Mr. James will give me an opportunity, maybe just to comment again. You had noted on behalf of the applicant that a grading plan was to be prepared, and as a normal course of that grading plan preparation, is it possible that it may uncover a need for additional stormwater controls on the site?
It could, it could. I would have to say that with my walk around of the site, I didn't notice anything like that, but they will certainly be doing a survey as well as a walk around beforehand. Murphy &amp; Hollis does that all the time in the City of Summit, he's somebody we've found very trusted. I've never come back to the board for a water problem on any of my houses in my 40 years of practice, so.
Andy.
I feel confident of what we're gonna be doing is gonna to be correct with all of the rules and regulations in Summit. Absolutely.
So maybe on that point, Mr. James and Andy, if you can remind us, in terms of what is the effect for which an applicant may have on a property? So can this applicant make the stormwater condition worse on the property and for the surrounding property owners as a result of the improvements proposed?
No, the stormwater runoff post-development can never increase beyond the pre-development allowances. So if there are those detrimental impacts on the neighbors, again, the board's retaining drainage jurisdiction, so that's the avenue for relief. If you do notice an increase in stormwater runoff on any of your properties, please alert the city, let them know. But again, the engineer will be reviewing, proposing a plan, which should minimize any impacts at all on this relatively small increase.
So we want to make sure you appreciate, as the applicant, the standard you're being held to. Do you generally understand what our attorneys just described?
Yes.
And I assume as a good neighbor in Summit, you'll aspire to at least create no greater of a negative impact, if not perhaps improve, the surrounding stormwater, but I won't hold you to the numbers today.
Yes.
Okay. And then do you, Ms. Taylor, understand that if for whatever reason, post-development, you or your surrounding neighbors identify and can isolate it as a cause of a change to the stormwater conditions, this particular property, that you would come back to the city, and that you would have recourse through this board to address additional stormwater management controls?
Whose cost?
The improvements?
No, if there's a problem, I have to pay for a lawyer to come and take a look at what you.
You don't need a lawyer to call Stephanie, she'd be happy to take your call anytime. You have a direct line of sight here into the zoning board.
I can just say that I'm extremely concerned. I don't, I mean, we have spent 45, our house is an old home, we have spent 45 years trying to deal with the water problem in that area. There is a water problem there. Our neighbor's yard floods is marshy all the time. It goes into our, it goes into our property. It goes into the property next. There used to be, there used to be a little drainage, like a river kind of thing between Evergreen and Webster in the back where the water used to run down. Right, David?
Yeah.
And it's not there anymore.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor, this is, it's very.
The water issue really, really worries me.
Thank you for coming and providing, no, no, this is, we needed your testimony this evening, and we want to make sure, we're thinking, Mr. James, that both you as a representative of the neighboring properties and you as the applicant understand the standard you're being held to and the recourse that you enjoy as a neighbor here in the City of Summit. And it's infrequent, but it's not unheard of, that you can certainly come back to us and we would bring him back here on a Monday evening, and we would ask for detailed engineering descriptions and a serious study of the negative impact that you may have observed. So what I would encourage you to do if the application is approved this evening, to document very thoroughly the existing conditions, that if you do, again, note any change post-development from the improvements that he's proposed, that you can come before this board, or I would even encourage you to go first to him and try to resolve it with your neighbors. Does that make sense?
Good.
Thank you very much. Ms. Taylor, Mr. James, you were gonna say something?
I just wanted to clarify the two addresses that we're talking about.
You wanted the numbers, so you're 7 Evergreen, is that correct?
Seven.
Seven, and then Mr. Barr, what was your address?
About 29.
Montrose.
So, no, 29 Montrose.
All right, Tom, you were saying something?
You know, I have a question, because normally, when we have questions like this, we have a specific, at this meeting, we have a specific plan. We're gonna install a, you know, a storm drain, a well, the size, you know, whatever, and we don't have that right now. So how are we gonna word a condition on results of, which we don't know, about what might be needed, what might not be needed?
Right. What do you think, Andy?
Well, I mean, we have the retaining drainage jurisdiction condition to address the overall situation. The reason there's no particular plan here tonight, as Mr. James noted, is because the lock coverage increase is below the 300 square foot cutoff, when the city actually requires that those, you know, stormwater improvements be submitted. So if there are particular concerns the board has, if they want to ensure those plans are submitted and reviewed by city engineers, we can do that.
Well, I would ask Dipthy, are you comfortable in saying that what they're proposing, if it's approved tonight, would not make the water situation worse? We can't, we can't make them make it better, we can't force them to that, but are you confident to know enough that this will not make it worse?
You're asking me?
No, I'm asking our engineer.
I, best thing I can say is that when we're increasing any lot coverage, that will definitely increase the stormwater flow. So how and where they're directed, I cannot determine that without looking at a grading plan, because I don't have the contours in front of me, but any increase in lot coverage is gonna increase your recourse. So if the situation currently is negative, then capturing that stormwater on the property would be the best solution.
It seems to me that if the topography is that these two neighbors that she read letters from are downhill, the only thing that's gonna even keep it equal or improve it is a dry well.
Or capturing it, whether it's a stormwater chamber of some sort. A dry well wouldn't work because of the clay soils that were mentioned, so we would have to look into that. So I would say to the board to have them propose a plan and show what the improvement would be for the 224 square feet.
Right, which is their obligation, right?
Yeah.
Of the application. Okay, we put that condition in.
So I know you've already represented that a plan would be coming, but any opposition to submitting a grading and drainage plan to the board engineer for review and approval as a condition of this application tonight?
So would that be separate from the plan that we're going to be submitting to the building department for review and approval?
It could be the same.
It would be the same.
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna have Murphy &amp; Hollis submit a plan for that. Absolutely.
We can add that as a condition.
Yeah.
All right.
And we would ask that you share with the neighbors, consult with them in advance, buy them a cup of coffee or something, explain all the good work you're gonna do. Okay.
Yeah, and it is very curious, we have a dry basement on our property.
Leave that to Murphy &amp; Hollis.
I couldn't hear that last statement.
His basement's dry.
They have a dry basement here on this property.
Uphill basements tend to be that way. Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board? Mr. Barr, do you wanna?
Yeah, well, I was gonna make a statement, but you.
Oh, you're welcome, yeah. You're here, you came out tonight, so, yep. We're gonna ask you, just say your, just your name, your address again, and we're gonna swear you in for your statement.
Okay, Dave Barr, 29 Montrose Avenue, Summit.
If you raise your right hand, do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this matters, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please just spell your last name?
B-A-R-R. Okay, most of what you've said about the two-week retention of control, not control.
Two-year.
Two-year. Did I say two-week? The only thing I would point out now, or request now, is that the neighbors that are getting the runoff currently, and I understand that most of that is not a problem of you guys, because some not-so-good things have been done in the past. If the plant, if your grading planner could consult at least Gordon's and us at those two lots, just to see what the existing conditions are, because if they're just gonna do it on paper from contour maps and stuff, that's not gonna be really sufficient.
I'm gonna notify him of your two addresses.
Okay.
And say that there was an issue with your two properties. And ask him to make sure that no water from our property is going there. Now, I can't say what's going on with adjacent neighbors around us, and I have no idea where the water's coming from.
Yeah, and.
Personally, right now.
But would he possibly be willing to come and talk to us and let us show where water is coming? Because I got a lot of surface water, and I can show.
Where do you think it's coming from?
Oh, when it rains.
Mr. Mr. Chese, would you have any objection to the engineer's contacting? No, okay. I think it's a very reasonable request.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. That's it.
Perfect.
Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
If you think you have headaches now, just wait until the work starts.
All right. Sorry, Wally, did you want to say something? I saw you leap up the microphone.
I just had a question. Yeah, sorry. With the grading study, is that also a soil study? So are you, would you discover that the soil is in fact clay, like someone had mentioned, or percolates a certain way on your property, which, the results of which might impact how your neighbors might also have soil? And I only ask this, and I'm really sorry, but you brought it up. You said that you did a lot of work to your house. Sorry, I'm talking to the neighbors behind you. And I'm sure you guys all have the same soil, I have the same soil, but if you discover something, I'm sure you might have similar issues, but that doesn't necessarily mean that you do have similar issues. So is it a soil study as well, and does it measure how much water goes through the dirt and where it goes? And that's really my question.
Is a perk test usually included in this kind of engineering study, Dipthy? Let's ask the engineer, right?
It is, sorry. Yes. So it is a perk test.
Yes, there are. Typically, those are done, and from any other reviews and report on applications we pass, that is a part of the process.
Is there something that would be triggered by soil not percolating to a standard, or is there a standard for soil?
Yes.
Even with something this small?
Yeah, there are infiltration rates that need to be, the infiltration rate that needs to be met, I should say. So the applicant will have to see that the dry well actually drains properly in that a lot of time, and that particular soil in that area would be, would drain that soil.
Gotcha.
So it will drain the water.
So to the extent that they're doing this now, that'll benefit their property and hopefully surrounding properties, to the extent that neighbors around there may have done it years ago, soil may have changed within that time, and the percolation of that soil might be different, but not the same as the soil that will be tested as you do your grading going forward. All right, so, okay. That's it, that was my question, statement, cool.
I mean, I also just have a question to know, and in particular, I know that the city has identified certain neighborhoods and areas that they have just identified as areas that need attention for stormwater runoff. Does anyone know if this is an area that the city is paying attention to?
You've been reading the annual report, though, so I like to hear this. I don't know if this was one of the flagged areas, but this is a great example of.
Because maybe this is an area that we do need to flag in, if there are percolation issues that dry wells can't, you know, help, that it is important to know that, because water needs to go then to the street instead of to dry wells, and then they have to increase the stormwater drainage system. That's a city issue, it's not an issue for the applicants here to bear on their shoulders solely.
It raises two good points, and then we should move to deliberations, because we'll be here all night talking stormwater management. I know Dipthy, you're loving it, but we gotta draw on it somewhere. Yes, there are certainly regional stormwater considerations to be had. We can't speak to this particular area off the top of our heads, but there are sections of town where just the contours, the property, the composition of the soil is such that it's more than isolated from its, in terms of its origin, from one property. And that should give you a little bit of ease at night to know that really what you're being held accountable for is the change, in this case, of the lot coverage, not to solve for all stormwater management that's run around all the surrounding properties. It doesn't mean that the problem isn't real, and that it isn't of issue, but it's of issue to the city, frankly, and it's something that we can, through this board, you know, give attention to, through the engineering department, to see. Like Wallace wrote, is a good example of an area that considerable investment was made over many years to help address stormwater management controls. And this may be next on the pecking order for them to address. So we can bring that, Ms. Taylor, Mr. Barr, to the attention of the city, so to see if that's something, maybe they can proactively reach out to you and look to address, probably over an extended period of time, but something a little bit more holistic than just forcing everyone to sink dry wells into their property to try to solve for these kind of problems. Okay.
The only thing I would request is the consultation or the coordination you'll have with the viewers, if you can document that for our information.
That'd be wonderful. Okay. All right, let's draw that to a close. It's been fun. Andy, what conditions did we land on for this application?
So we have three. One is our usual, compliance with those conditions noted in the board engineer's memorandum. The second is that the board will retain drainage jurisdiction for a period of two years after the completion of construction. And third is that the applicants will submit a grading, grading and drainage plan to the board engineer for review and approval.
Okay. All right, with that, who would like to begin deliberations?
I will do it, since it's in my.
Go live, go.
This property is definitely an undersized lot compared to everything else in that area. I think your renovations are tasteful, and it will create comfort in your home, because all of the homes are about the same. And it's keeping in line with every other house, I think there's three renovations going on literally around the corner from you. And I feel your pain through the other neighbors with the water issue. I had the same issue in my backyard. I regraded my backyard. We have issues with water, not just because of the construction, it's just because of where we are. But I will be prompt to approve this application, because it is a modest and modest application that'll bring definite comfort and usability to your home.
Diana, or also, I mean, why's the jump a little cute? Sorry, go ahead.
While I agree with your comment here that this is a good improvement, I do oppose to the extend, to some of the variances, especially those variances extending the sideyard. I don't. I don't, I think we can live without these variances, and keep the, the grass area to the maximum. We know there, there are problems with water, some of the management, and we have some ambiguities here. Therefore, I do not support that application.
Mr. Malley, there are no side yard setback variances being requested?
The 15.
Rear yard?
The rear yard.
Is that what you're referring to?
And this, yeah, I have here the 15, and the other one should be 20. That's a small minor, but the first one is big, and it could be reduced.
Diana, you want to mention anything?
I would support this application. I think that the requests are minor in nature. I think that overall they're improving the home. I hope that, once they have worked with the engineer on a drainage problem, that they will take the comments of their neighbors to heart, and try to do as holistic a plan as possible, and try to improve the drainage on their property to the greatest extent possible, because it is always better to improve, you know, improve the whole property the way they're improving their home, to make it better and more comfortable for themselves and the whole neighborhood. But I, you know, we can't hold them to that, but I think that it is a modest application to improve the home, and that we should approve it.
Scott, what do we got?
I'm pretty sure that rainstorms and summit don't start and stop right over 31 Montrose, but I could be wrong about that. I am appreciative that you're willing to work with your neighbors to solve this problem that seems to exist in the neighborhood. In addition to Liz's comment about the undersized lot, I think the shape of it also provides a challenge to you in terms of trying to expand the home, and kudos to you for leaving FAR on the table. I mean, I think probably 3% or 4%, so you obviously had some opportunities to make the house even bigger than you're proposing, and you chose restraint, so I'm certainly appreciative of that. I think you're really getting the most out of your design, and your architect has really proposed a great addition expansion while keeping the footprint relatively in the same spot. So, with that, I could see supporting this application.
So, if we didn't have this water issue, this will be one of those cases where Steve is looking around, and everyone's trying to avoid talking about the case, and we have to, like, force the deliberation. And I think that speaks. I think that speaks to the project, like, on its merits, just the improvements to the property. It's sort of a no-brainer kind of addition, you know, the houses in the neighborhood, they were built at a different time, when people had just different space needs, and I think you are bringing it up to modern standards. Now, the water issues are significant, and obviously of serious concern to your neighbors, however, I think the conditions that have been proposed and that you've agreed upon should adequately address them. You know, there's, we've seen, certainly your engineers have appeared before this board on numerous occasions, and they, they tend to do a pretty comprehensive job, so you may have signed up for more than you expected with them, but I, I think, when all said and done, the fears that your neighbors have will probably not be realized here, and I'm in support of the application.
Wally, anything you'd like to say?
No, I support the application. I think you're doing a great job of trying to mitigate the water issues and making your house functional, and, yeah, it's, like everyone has said, it's a modest addition, you could have done more, but I think you didn't. Maybe you will in the future, but, you know, maybe you will have solved all of a sudden the water problems by then, which is probably. So, no, I would support this, it's a good addition, and hopefully it also resolves a lot of the neighbors' concerns in the, in doing so.
I too could support the application. I do appreciate sincerely Ms. Taylor, Mr. Barr, I saw he left, but that you did join this evening. Like Mr. Mullen suggested, if neighbors with concerns do not come forward, oftentimes the narrative can be a little more constrained than maybe the full story would otherwise tell. I have great faith that the applicants are gonna do good by, not just themselves, but by the neighboring property, so continue to foster a healthy and fair dialogue, work with the engineers, and then we've given you not just one avenue of recourse through review of the plans by our board engineer, but then also retain drainage jurisdiction for the application. So, we're here most every other Monday evening, you can come and see us, or call Stephanie, and we do take, you know, that, that charge very seriously, so monitor very closely the development. Start first with your, with your neighbors, and go to our board engineer, and from there, you know, maybe we'll hear from you, and probably we won't, but as Mr. Mullen suggested, they have on hire here a great engineer, they'll do a thorough job, if not, we'll make sure to remind them of that every time we do see them. So, thank you for coming this evening, and thank you for sharing what you're experiencing as a neighboring property. So, with that, I'd ask for a motion with the conditions as noted to approve the application. So moved. Second? Stephanie, roll call, please.
Sure. Ms. Noel?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
No.
Mr. Loykett?
Yes.
Chairman Sparr?
Yes.
Oh, and Ms. Dager, sorry.
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, good luck with your project, thank you, thank you very much. We're gonna take a five-minute recess, and then we'll hear about the puppies.
Yes.
All right, bring on the puppies. What do we got here?
Good evening again. Blake Witt, on behalf of the applicant, BZ Paws LLC, doing business as VIP puppy. So, the entity is the commercial tenant at 38 Morris Turnpike, and we are here seeking approval of the amended site plan and attendant C variances, which we would characterize as sort of a classic C1 variances, but in the alternative, we're gonna argue that they are also appropriate as C2 variances. By way of background, historically, I'm sure you are all aware of this, but specifically the, the site improvements were previously approved by this board on August 16th, August 6th, 2018, by a resolution memorialized on September 5th, 2018. Most of those improvements have been completed. At this point, with the testimony of our engineer, William Scott, our architect, Stephen Schwartz, and as needed, should the board have questions of the applicant, we have the owner of the applicant, Gabriel Halaban, here this evening to address those questions. The variances that we're seeking specifically deal with a side yard setback or a walkway that connects to the side of the building, that is at the edge of the lot line, where two feet is required. We're seeking a side yard setback for air conditioning condenser units, which are three and a half feet from the lot line, whereas four feet are required, and we're seeking approval for a rear vinyl fence, which is eight feet high, where seven feet was previously approved and is permitted. So, what we're going to attempt to show is that the C1 variance is appropriate due to the very unique shape of the property, and as to the C2 variance, we will show that the benefits outweigh any of the detriments, and will not adversely impact the plan. Specifically, in terms of the AC units, there's really no, there's not a practical spot for them to be relocated, given the placement of the existing buildings and the parking at the site. The proposed walkway, stairs, platform, and exterior door likewise don't have a, a location that it could be placed where it would provide what we're looking for, which is a practical means of entry and egress directly from the lot, the exterior, for customers who have pets that are suffering from an illness or, or seeking treatment, so they can access an isolation room that is on the inside of that door where the proposed walkway is. And finally, the height variance for the rear fence will assist with, it'll provide screening from Route 24, and it will help with the safety of the, of the animals on site. The impact to neighboring properties is minimal, the existing structures are remaining the same, the changes to the stockade and perimeter fencing are nominal, they will not impact sightlines, and they will aid the operation of the business in terms of, you know, providing a better environment for the, the housing of the, those pets that are either in daycare or boarding at the facility. Finally, there's not gonna be any impact to the, the access to the property, the, the one-way into the parking lot and out of the parking lot, nothing is going to change there with the curbing, and the, the plan will be, will generally enhance the aesthetics of the site. So, I'd like to, if I may, begin with testimony from our engineer, William Scott, and it's.
Before we hear from Mr. Scholar, just any questions from the board, or if you, Mr. Witt?
I just can't help but ask, your, your drawings say that the door is not operable.
Oh, currently?
I think they made that a condition of a temporary seal, because they wanted that approved by the board.
So, the original plan was to have a door that per Krista's requirement was not operable, but now they wanna put a walkway into the door that they're gonna use?
Mr. Scott will be able to answer, speak to that?
Yes, that's correct, and he would be pleased to address that.
Any questions for Mr. Witt, just in a background?
Yeah, I have one background question, which maybe you want to direct to the appropriate witnesses. I mean, I think it's fine you're asking for these four variances, but obviously, I think all four of them were things that weren't in the original proof plans, and I just would like to get a sense of, of how that happened, and how it says, you know, Krista's saying, following discovery, tell us about, you know, how these things happened, and following discovery, what does that mean? Just a story of how that happened.
Certainly. Well, if, if the board in its entirety is amenable, I'll have the, the owner address that at the conclusion of the testimony from Mr. Scott and Mr. Schwartz. He can sort of address any of those practical questions regarding the timing, and sort of, of the timing of the work, and how and why things took place.
Okay.
Were Mr. Scott and Mr. Schwartz the original professionals?
I believe they were. My involvement in the project doesn't go back to 2018.
Excellent, so maybe everyone can speak to that, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Witt, and I'll just note for the record, unless they're hiding behind the plans there, there are no members of the interested public here this evening for this application. Okay, happy to hear from Mr. Scott, then.
Thank you, and if, if it works for everyone, I'll, I'll speak from the other table here while Mr. Scott speaks with Dave.
If you raise your right hand, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matters, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name.
William Scott, S C O T T.
Thank you, and you've appeared before a board relatively recently, correct?
I have, yes.
Any changes to your credentials since the last time you were here?
No.
Welcome back, Mr. Scott.
Thank you.
Assuming your license is.
License is still in good state, I think, in New Jersey? All right.
So, as you heard, I was the original design engineer for this project. It was a challenging project, it's an irregular-shaped lot. During the original proposal, we proposed to construct a new building to the right side of the property. We proposed to completely remodel the existing building, we added proper parking areas, large detention structures, and play areas for the dogs, and all throughout, the business was kept open, even with the added problems of the pandemic, which occurred during the bulk of the construction. Our company did perform an ASBIL survey upon completion of the site improvements, and from what I understand, during the review of our ASBIL survey, at time of certificate of occupancy, consideration, some of these items came to light that were deviations from the approved plan, and I'd just like to kind of run through them one by one, give you my understanding of them, and my opinion as to whether there's any engineering-related negative detriments or impacts from them. First, there was an addition of some air circulation equipment on the rooftop of the building to the left, that's the lower building. From what I understand, it became evident during the construction that very specialized equipment to moderate the humidity levels within the building were necessary to achieve proper air, the proper air for the health of the dogs, and that is the reason that equipment came to be. It's proposed on the flat portion of the roof, and it's proposed to be screened, and you'll hear more from our architect about how the screening will be seen visually from the street. The rear of the building to the south, abuts Route 24, was originally proposed to be clad in translucent panels as an architectural detail. During the course of construction, the owner became aware that these translucent panels would allow the light to effectively burst into the sleeping quarters of the dogs and wake them up at daylight. So, at that point, a change was made to complete the walls with solid block. Again, that's seen only from Route 24, and you'll hear from our architect about some proposed visual enhancements to that wall to make it more visually appealing. There was an area of fencing that we had proposed at seven foot, and that occurs between the two buildings. That was constructed at eight foot. Again, it's abutting Route 24, it was done to evade the noise, the cars from the highway, and it occurs between two buildings that are both much higher than eight feet. This additional doorway, it occurs at the leftern, leftmost edge of the building as you view the plan. It's my understanding that the doorway was not proposed as part of the original plan. It was constructed, and during, at the time of the ASBIL survey, it was agreed that the door would be rendered inoperable until it was reviewed and hopefully approved by the board. There's a platform, two or three steps down into a walkway, which runs right along the property line. Again, two foot is required setback there, we're at zero. You'll see, though, that next to that building is a large expanse of open area which is owned by DOT, and which presumably would never be constructed upon, so visually, I don't feel there's any negative impact to that improvement. There were some air conditioning units, additional air conditioning units added to the site, and again, this occurred after the construction was ongoing, I believe during the first summer. The original design proposed large opening garage doors, and it became evident that even with those garage doors, through aid with the air circulation, the building was becoming much too hot for the dogs, and the air conditioning units were installed. The units are now screened with fencing, they're screened with landscaping. Mr. Linson had noted that the boxwood plantings that we had installed were proposed were not ideal, and we would propose to replace them with inkberry hollies, which I believe are acceptable to him. In Ms. Anderson's report, she noted that she believed it was be prudent to add two bollards. bollards along the rear of the two parking spaces here to protect those two air conditioning units, and we, of course, would agree to do that. So I feel these deviations were all done to increase the functionality of the business, to increase the safety of the dogs, and from an engineering perspective, very minor, and I find no, no negative impact or no detrimental impact from an engineering perspective.
If I may, Mr. Scott, I have, I noted one question, well, quite a few questions. If I could ask you to refer to the zoning detail in the amended site plan. I understand it was a question regarding the building coverage, what was presently existing and proposed, and I just wanted to confirm that it is indeed a 46.97% that was previously approved, and that is not, is not changing the building coverage amount?
That's correct. The building coverage that we measured post-construction was equal to what was proposed.
In terms of the additional square footage for the walkway, it appears that that's approximately 87 feet. Do you anticipate any runoff issues presented by the additional square footage?
No. The changes that were made to the approved plan, they had an approximately 120 square foot of impervious coverage. I go back to the original approval where 265 square feet of impervious was added to the site, yet we proposed the drywall that was sized to hold the rainfall runoff from the roof and from the paved areas, which totaled 6,200 square feet. So the runoff from the site was drastically, drastically reduced at the time of the original site plan, and runoff from 120 square feet, I think, would be immeasurable compared to that.
One last question. You had addressed the benefits and detriments. From an engineering perspective, do you find that the proposed changes are in keeping with the commercial nature of this area on horse-herd biking?
Yeah, all of the proposed construction materials are materials that we find up and down the street, or were already proposed on the site. Nothing I would find out of the ordinary to that effect, no.
Thank you. I have no further questions for Mr. Scott.
Dipd, do you want to ask any engineering questions?
Unfortunately, I, we have not received this amended site plan, hence the questions on the coverages that you are probably reading from our report. So that was part of maybe a... How would you like me to proceed? Maybe just ask what I have, and then...
Yeah, ask what you have. I mean, if we feel like it would be necessary to condition the application on some separate review and approval of the plans, I'm sure the applicant would find that amenable, but start with what you have, and we'll see where we land.
Okay, no problem. Thanks. So the CMU wall, which is concrete masonry, rear wall construction, is shown on the plan. Is that, is that a plan from the approved site plan, or is that a new construction that's proposed for the project?
Now, the original proposal, and you'll hear more from the architect on this, was to clad the rear of the building in a translucent panel. The CMU wall was, I think, the base of the construction of that wall, and it was just carried up through the entire construction in lieu of the translucent panels.
Okay. So there's no details or structural accounts associated with it? Will you need that at this point, or had that been originally approved?
I think, you know, perhaps the architect could address it, but it's the standard CMU one-story wall. Nothing out of the ordinary.
Okay. I'm looking at the site plan in front of me, but on this amended site plan, we would have the limits of the new sidewalk. If any grading information is required with that, was that part of that whole set of plans, or...?
We showed schematically where it would be, and it would run from the left side of the building down that property line, out to the public sidewalk, right along the property line, and the grading would be essentially just graded flush into the existing ground. It's very flat there.
Okay. For the concealment of those HVAC units that were noted on the architectural plan sheet 83A, were you going to propose a landscape plan for the city to review?
There was a landscape plan that had been looked at, and I believe there was some informal back and forth with Mr. Linton, and so we had added plantings. Some of those are the boxwoods that we're now saying we're offering to replace with the inkberry hollies. So, you know, obviously, we'll work with Mr. Linton and provide any landscaping that's requested.
Just trying to limit it to... The increase in lot coverage was just about 120 square feet currently, and the existing drywall system takes care of about 6,000 square feet of...
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So without having, just missing this amendment, it's like...
So I'm trying to go the best kind of way forward with this. I mean, it doesn't strike me that there's some radical departure or some major gap in this that we can't address by assuming the application's approved, just simply kind of crossing Ts and dotting Is with a resolution to ensure that no detail is missed. Unless another member of the board has a desire to condition the approval on formal review and approval of the amended plans, I think we'll just kind of do a normal course of business, ensure that Dipd gets her opportunity to review it and flags anything for the applicant to take special note of. All right, so we'll leave it as is now, for now. But if you do have anything, you know where to find them. Mr. With would be happy to look for the rest of your data.
Just so I understand, we're leaving our current letter as there's no need to amend it or update it?
Yeah, I think if there's some clarification that needs to be made, it would be made through the resolution, but it would be expected to be de minimis and clarifying if anything. Do you find it acceptable to include the engineer's letter as a condition of the application?
We do.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Just a second, anything you'd like to add for the engineer?
Just two quick questions, Chairman, regarding the eight-foot-high fence. In your understanding, what was the purpose for the eight-foot-high fence? I think you indicated it was for aesthetics, but also, was it also related to the keeping of dogs?
I believe it was more to close, there would have been a 12-inch gap between the rooftop canopy and the fencing, which kind of leaves an open area for that sound, just to kind of concentrate and push through. So the sound, it was a noise abatement measure.
Okay, so it wasn't necessarily just for security containment of dogs?
I don't believe so, no, not at eight foot tall.
All right, well, it's that. I think would lead more to the architect, but I'll ask you this question, somebody can answer it, is what change that required this new entrance to the building in the circulation flow? Is that something that this architect will address?
Yeah, I'd rather the...
Okay, thank you, because I know it's a question of the board, so thank you.
Any questions, then, from the board or the engineer?
I do, I think, if you're the right person. You mentioned that there's a space that's DOT, and that you don't anticipate the DOT ever needing that property. I wasn't here for, like, this prior board's approval. Did that, was that addressed initially as a part of last resolution, or is there a way to get confirmation that they're not going to use it? Do we have to?
They were notified as a condition of the application the DOT was.
They were notified, but there was no response?
That's correct. There was no response.
Okay. Is there any need for them to be re-notify because their doorway, which I believe is on the DOT site, is going to be accessible now? So should re-notification be given?
No, no, I don't believe it should, and further testimony from our architect will indicate, will clarify the operation of the door and that, you know, it will not be opening over the DOT property, and it's entirely accessible from the existing sidewalk. There's really, there's no, there's no encroachment beyond the property line.
No physical encouragement by the property, but the door will still be opening in the direct, not direction, but on the side of where the DOT property is, DOT property is.
It will be opening towards the side where the property is?
But, but right, not on their property.
Right, and our architect will address how it informs with the building code.
Where the standard 200-foot notice is given?
Yes.
So presumably, DOT, as owner of the neighboring property, would have received a notice.
Absolutely, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any questions for the engineer? Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Mr. Scott. Mr. With, your next witness, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm about to call our architect, Stephen Schwartz.
Do you swear a firm testimony you're about to give in this matters the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name.
Stephen Schwartz, S-C-H-W-A-R-T-Z.
Thank you, and I imagine you two appeared before the prior one. Any changes to your credentials since the last time?
No, they are the same as the last time I appeared here, several times for this project.
License still in good standing in New Jersey?
Yes, it is.
Any questions from the board, or would you like to accept them once again?
We'll accept your credentials. I can't believe that was 2018, though. We've all matured so considerably then. Please.
Okay, good evening. So first of all, I'd like to assure the board, because it seems like there could be questions about what changed on the project. So first of all, exactly the dimensions that were shown on that original site plan approval were complied with. The building's not an inch bigger or an inch smaller. It's exactly what was presented to you. But I can understand why you're questioning this door, and where did it come from, and how did that whole thing start? So during the project, Mr. Hallaban wanted to be sure that this was really like the ultimate, the ultimate puppy place where people could feel comfortable, their dogs were safe, that every precaution, every piece of cleanliness could possibly have been taken into consideration. So he hired an expert. In fact, I think you met him at a puppy show, at a big convention on dog care. So he hired this expert, who then analyzed everything that we had designed within the building, not so much to change the building, but to promote cleanliness, the way we would wash the floors, the way the drain would have continuous flow of water. And one of the things that he examined was what we had called an isolation room. So he want, we actually had that on the plan. We had called it an isolation room, but he said that it would really be much better if during the course of a dog staying, being boarded, and found to be sick, let's say, at 11 o'clock at night, and the people within the dog care facility would place that dog in isolation so that it would not infect the other dogs. It would be very important that, for instance, the air conditioning and the supply register not have a return air back into the rest of the spa. So it had to have negative pressure and be totally exhausted out from that room, not be, return air back into the room. That was number one, so we had to change some of our ductwork for that, to make sure that we complied with that. Number two, he said, the lower the humidity, the better, the less likely it is for bacteria to grow. In other words, if you lower the humidity in the air, you've eliminated that possibility of, I guess, some kind of, I'm calling it bacteria, but it's got another name probably, of anything that might be airborne. So that required this large piece of equipment that lowers the humidity. It's also extremely costly to run, but that wasn't our problem. You know, it uses more electricity. So we incorporated that, and that resulted in the air conditioning unit, all of a sudden, not fitting in the attic. So we were able to, we had a flat piece of roof, so we didn't create a new flat roof. That's actually on the original plan. But we did put this equipment out there, and we are proposing now, as you will see on one of the drawings, that we shield, visually, so we create a barrier so you're not looking at a raw piece of equipment. That still has to be done. So, but that's part of our proposal, and when we go back for the construction permit, we're just before you tonight for what we'll call site plan approval. We still have to create the drawings to go back to show the construction procedures and details for everything that we're showing you tonight. So I talked about the negative air pressure, about lowering the humidity, and the other thing that this expert said would be much better than what we had on our original drawing is if a dog is put into that isolation room, and then the owner comes to pick it up, do not bring it back into the kennel area. Just take it right out the building. All of a sudden, we were faced with that dilemma, and, but, you know, everything works out quite nicely because we had enough room there. We had three feet on that end of the building to the property line, so we installed a door there. So that's how, during the construction, from this expert, who was doing consulting work for all of us, came about with that idea. Now, when you put a door out there, there's a change in grade. You're not at grade. You're up in the air about three or four risers. So now we need a platform, we need a set of, let's say, three or four risers, and then we need a walk to get to the main sidewalk. So that is where everything started to happen, and the building inspector actually questioned me about having an opening on that end of the building. And we went back and forth, and I wrote him this letter on the 18th of July, 2022, explaining that the code actually allows that opening on the end, and I gave him two different ways to, two different sections of the code on why this could be approved, and he wrote back to me, you know, "I'm taking your reference to the code as being accurate," and eventually, he couldn't say, "I approve it," because it had to go before this board first, but he said that he accepts that as being the correct analysis of the code. So then we felt, now we can go before the board. We wouldn't have even come here if he had said no. So now we're here, and we're showing that door. The reason it was closed up is he didn't want to let us use the door until this board approved it. So it was reasonable, so we made it secured so Mr. Hallaban, you know, wouldn't overstep his power as the owner, so to speak. So we show that door. Originally, just so you know the full history of it, because you may find this in the notes from the building department, they had built a wooden platform and a wood stair on that side of the building. So he had said, "Listen, I understand you can do the door, but I'm not going to allow wood construction." So we said, "Fine." We tore down the wood that was there, and now it will be replaced, if this is approved, by a concrete masonry platform with masonry steps and then the sidewalk. Now, one of the reports that came back in these review of the submission, one of the reports said, you know, "Could you do something else other than concrete?" For instance, I don't know, just, it didn't say what it would be, but you can only imagine. It could be concrete pavers, for instance. But even concrete pavers have a problem with heaving under a freezing and thawing process... But even concrete pavers have a problem with heaving under, under a freezing and thawing process where they, they can heave, and it makes snow removal just that much more difficult. So we feel like in a commercial application like this, that a concrete walk for its minimal dimension of three feet out to the front is just so much better in concrete. We're talking about a minimal, minimal, minimal amount of surface area there. So that's why we would like to keep the proposed concrete walk exactly as it's shown. But I will say that the platform and the stair, that will all be masonry. That's what I agreed to with the building official, so that's what he's expecting to see. Then going to the, to the back wall, this was also where the, where the expert in dog care came to Mr. Halaban and said, listen, I know you're proposing this very interesting material called cow wall. It's a translucent panel that's three inches thick, it has some fiberglass insulation in it for insulating value. But he said, you've got to think about the fact that when the stun, when the sun rises, let's say it's 6:00 a.m., your dogs are going to go crazy. They are going to start barking, everybody's going to wake everybody up in there, and then by, you know, by 8:00 o'clock, they'll be exhausted and so forth. So that became really a practical matter on how do you have that much light? Because the place would have been blazing with light at a very early hour in the morning. How do we just attack this before we start buying cow wall, which, you know, is a, it's a whole, you have to order it like months in advance in order to get it, it's not something off the shelf. So we, we came up with that idea of taking the concrete block up. I will say this, we did not go with something like metal framing or wood studs, we could have used that. We wanted something more solid and absolutely permanent. You can't get more permanent than, than concrete block. So we did that. And then we didn't propose any finish on the outside because it's not very high and we didn't think it would be that objectionable. But the zoning officer and other people in the, in the building department said, listen, you know, it's, it's sort of a, a, an entry into town, people are driving by Route 24. We want a more finished material than just concrete block where you see all the joints. So we said, fine, we put on our thinking cap and we, we, we said, okay, we will finish it with a continuous stucco finish. And then like an off-white color, something not real colorful, not red or anything like that. And then we came up with this idea of putting dog silhouettes on there, different species of dogs, all in a cutout material, not painted, not painted, nothing will peel or, you know, look like hell.
Is your idea or the building department's idea, the dog cutouts? Whose idea was that, the dog cutouts?
I think it was ours.
Okay.
No, well, we enjoy things like that.
We're welcome to summit, no, no, it's wonderful.
Okay, so it just seemed like an interesting idea, and we went back and forth with Krista in the zoning, and she said, you know, that sounds really cool. So like I said, we're not proposing, because a lot of people are doing wall painting now where they do graphic arts on the building, but in time that can deteriorate, and then it looks worse than, than if you had done nothing. So these are permanent, it's a permanent material that will be affixed to the wall. It'll be fun and, you know, it gives just, it's a little more interesting than just a blank wall. So that is how that whole process changed with these many suggestions that came from the expert in dog care. I think I covered the building HVAC units, we're going to have a five-foot-high screen around those units. And then in terms of the HVAC condensers on the ground, that was all mechanical engineering. As Mr. Scott explained, during the first summer that they had that building up, all of a sudden, it was really hot in there. It got to be, I think, 86 degrees one day inside the building, which was just, it was too hot for the dogs. We were able to ingeniously put the proposed air conditioning unit under the ramp, so it did not take up any floor space within the play building. It's all concealed under the ramp and it cools the building and, I mean, everything worked out great for the dogs, for the use of the building. Have you, you've all seen the project, right? I mean, this is an amazing building. The fact that the owner was willing to create a whole building just for dogs to play in, and then we created that ramp within that idea. And by the way, this whole idea transpired at a meeting upstairs. We were having a meeting with everybody, the building department, zoning, we were all sitting there. And I said, you know, what if we did this? What if we were able to get up to the roof of the building and have a play area up there? And that was it. That's exactly how it happened, right at a meeting here in Town Hall. So that ramp, I just want you to know, that ramp that goes up there is actually handicapped accessible, which requires a one-on-12 pitch. So I don't know if we'd have handicapped dogs, but the fact is that even taking a owner of a dog just on a tour of the building, you could actually take an owner up there in a wheelchair, and it is a totally handicapped accessible ramp. So that was kind of a nice touch to, to make it accessible for humans and easy for dogs, too.
Great building, part of Chairman Yuko's legacy here on the zoning.
Oh. So I think I covered a lot of things that you may have questioned, I hope I answered your question. It was reasonable because, you know, where, you would have no idea where all that came from. So that's how it all transpired.
Wonderful. Maybe we'll go back to our professionals then. Dee, anything you want to address?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. How do you feel about the silhouettes?
I think they're good.
Okay, what else?
But yes, the questions I have, just regarding the side entrance to the building.
Yes.
Will there be a light over top of that? I imagine you have to have that according to...
Okay, it is not a required exit because we have exits elsewhere in the building. Normally...
You might have a sick dog and...
Yeah, no, no, I, I can see, nor, normally if that was a required exit, we would have to have an exterior emergency light, but you know what, it's not a bad idea. Because if there was an emergency and that dog had to be taken out, then maybe a light could come on. You know what I'm saying, to light the stair, too.
And something shielded because of the on-ramp that occurred right there.
Oh.
Something goes downward, kept.
Okay, but it would be an emergency, you know what I mean? It would be an emergency light, so I don't know if those come with shields, but I'll look into that. I'm, I'm sure there's way to put a baffle on it.
Right, and then is there any rooftop over those stairs?
No, no, it's only three risers, I believe.
I noted that the variance is related to the sidewalk, but I think we may want to include the staircase as well in that variance.
And the platform.
Also right at the property line. So it might be an extension of actually the building touching the property line. Because it's physically attached to the building.
No, I don't have to attach it. There could be an expansion joint and it will be separate.
We're just trying to capture it.
Oh, okay, okay.
Just make sure we're capturing that in the variance that's necessary, so therefore I'll include that. Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Wonderful. Questions from members of the board?
Just one, are, are the silhouettes going to be backlit?
No, no, should we? They could bark, too, you know.
Might be cool at night.
Do you mind if we do? I don't think he wants to spend the money back lighting them, forget that.
I don't think so. Any questions from this side of the dais? Tom, anything we left on?
I was just saying no to the back.
No. That's going to be a big welcome, welcome to summit kind of sign, but then we got to deal with lettering and stuff, so let's leave it alone. Okay, like we've heard enough from the architect, thank you very much for the background, Mr. Schwartz.
And for the board, although Mr. Schwartz, I think, gave a pretty thorough description of the thought process and the timing regarding the installation of the door, how that came about. And I think that's the most significant aspect of this application. I would offer the owner, Gabriel Halaban, to answer any questions that the board might have regarding the timing of what's occurred here, but I don't have any questions for him myself.
Now, you, you answered my question, so I, I don't feel the need for that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Halaban? We won't unnecessarily subject him. Thank you for extending the offer and not forcing additional testimony on the board at only, at such early hour. So yeah, hearing no questions, Dip D or...
I just have, I just did have one, real quick one. Is, is this just puppy salon and boarding? Are there any veterinary services offered?
It's just boarding, grooming, daycare.
Okay.
Right now, now we need him sworn in.
I gotta swear him in. Diana, what did you do?
I believe him.
Do you want to swear him in just for the sake of the transcript?
Yeah, let's do it just to be safe.
Go ahead, sorry, Mr. Halaban.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give or gave in this matters? The truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name.
Gabriel Halaban, H-A-L-A-B-A-N.
Thank you, and any other questions now that you forced him to be sworn in?
No, okay, all right. Thank you for being sworn in this evening. All right, anything you'd like to say in conclusion?
No, thank you, I appreciate all of your courtesies this evening.
Excellent, thank you. I'll note again for the record, there are no members of the interested public here this late hour. Before we jump into deliberations, Andy, can you remind us of the conditions?
Just our one, compliance with those conditions noted in the board engineer's memorandum.
Okay, we'd like to begin.
Well, again, I am very passionate about this application because you had an expert come in and tell you to change something about your building and you took that, and you did it. And it's better for, I'm assuming, all the other puppies and dogs that are there and very considerate about the sick dogs and putting the emergency lighting, which I'm sure is more of a requirement, but still very considerate of the owners. So yeah, very, I don't know, I wasn't here for it, but I would approve this. Good for the dogs, good for you, very, very reasonable application. I see no detriment to people on 124 driving by, they're not affected by this or, and it keeps in line with the commercial nature of that area, probably improves it, so, so yeah.
So normally, these cases like this drive me absolutely crazy. And we've all encountered a fair share of cases where someone doesn't build according to plan and the explanation perhaps isn't plausible. I would say this is that rare case where it is a very reasonable explanation and you've actually rendered a benefit to the use and functionality of the building by making these changes. And, you know, just to give you an idea of like how nuts these things drive me. I was reading through the old, the, the old application and I saw the, you know, the requirement that the lights be off by 10:00 p.m. So I drove there about 10:30 last night, just to make sure. And the lights were off, so I commend you. So I am in support.
That's a good thing those lights were all bad.
Amazing, Scott, anything you want to add?
No, Mr. Halaban, I, I would commend you for having Mr. Schwartz here. He did a fantastic job of explaining the situation. It made all the sense in the world. I was very skeptical when we started this process tonight, but after his explanation, it all made total sense to me, although you might want to consider a different MEP engineer down the road because it sounds like, you know, none of the HVAC sort of made sense at the beginning. And even trying to open and close the garage doors or adding extra equipment later, despite what your guru told you, I, I think I could still be very much in support of this project.
Descent from this end of the dais?
No descent.
All right, wonderful. And I would echo Mr. Scott's comments around increased functionality, given these improvements, relatively de minimis nature, it looks like what we're really talking about at the end of the day. And then just to really draw to a close, the clear and substantial benefit to extended definition of public health and safety to include our four-legged friends. So we're thankful for that, and I was impressed by the fence, the fence explanation about noise abatement. That was totally through and through a loop, so good on that, Mr. Scott. Can support the application accordingly. Do we have a motion to approve the application with the condition as noted?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Stephanie?
Sure. Ms. Newell?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Mullin?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Mr. Loykett?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Chairman Spur?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schwartz. All right, we have a little bit of housekeeping to take care of, three resolutions for memorialization, one set of minutes, and then I promise you a speedy executive session. So let's go through the resolutions first.
Okay, the first resolution we have is 46 Hartley Road. That's ZB-22-2157. The eligible voting members are Chairman Spur, Vice Chairman Steiner, Mr. Malay, Ms. Toth, and Mr. Yuko. Would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second, I guess I can second it.
You can second it.
Chairman Spur?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
Mr. Yuko?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. The next one is 47 Parkview Terrace, that's ZB-22-2174. The eligible voting members are Vice Chairman Steiner, Mr. Malay, Ms. Toth, Mr. Yuko. Would someone like to move that one?
Moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
Mr. Yuko?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. The last one we have is 26 Edgewood, that's ZB-22-2171. The eligible voting members are Chairman Spur, Vice Chairman Steiner, Mr. Malay, Mr. Ms. Toth, and Mr. Yuko. Would someone like to move that?
So moved.
Okay. Chairman Spur?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
Mr. Yuko?
Yes.
The motion carries. So next we have are the minutes from March 6. Can we get a motion? And a second?
Second.
Okay. Let's do a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, the motion carries.
And then we need one more motion. We have a brief executive session planned to address our 2022 annual report in Beacon Unitarian Church application. So we'll ask for a motion to enter into executive session. We'll note, though, that no further public business will be conducted after that. So after we exit the executive session, we will adjourn for the evening. We have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss those two items.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second, thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'll do a voice vote for this.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, let's take a quick break, we're going to have Amanda shut off the camera and all that kind of fun stuff. You can hang if you want, or you...